I'd like to welcome everyone here to the June 11th meeting of Richland 2 Board of Trustees. Thank you very much for being here tonight. At this time, we're going to have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand? Today, I want us to remember Bobby Cunningham, the Director of Adult Education, as he recovers from his heart step. I feel kindred with him now, since it's about a year ago that I went through the same thing. But I know he recovered your prayers and your thoughts. I'm just going to say a short prayer for Bobby. Thank you, Lord, for the things you do for us. We ask you that you lift Bobby Cunningham up, his family, and others that we don't know about right now in our district that need your support and your loving arms. These things we ask of your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve our current agenda?
So move.
Ms. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Let us vote on that motion. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir. Mine's just a little slow, sir.
Okay. Mine was last one.
I'm in now.
I keep unanimous votes for approve our agenda. We have a consent agenda to approve. It includes a minutes from the previous meeting, our budget update, student readmission requests, student admission requests to the district's adult education program, and ratification of personnel. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, can we take just a five-minute recess or a two-minute recess to discuss an issue with our consent agenda?
Surely.
Okay.
I'm going to hold you to two minutes.
All right. That's mine.
That actually saves us some time, so believe it or not, we shortened your meeting. Thank you. Okay, I don't have a motion yet. I think it's consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. Ms. Anderson, any discussion? There it is, 7-0. Thank you very much, Board. Time now for special recognitions. Dr. Brochue, I'm going to give it to you, or you're delicate here.
At this time, I'll call on Laura Baker to come forward, and I believe Teresa Riley will also join her in making presentations this evening.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Brochue and staff, tonight we have many individuals and teams to recognize. Honorees, as I call your names, please come forward. First, we are recognizing several high-achieving students from two of our high schools. Spring Valley High School students Courtney Noe, David Q, and Renaud Sobath are among the 2,500 students across the country who won one of the sought-after $2,500 National Merit Scholarship Corporation scholarships. Three others, Erica Arve, Jonathan Bolan, and Daniel Clements are among the 4,500 merit finalists that have earned 2013 college-sponsored National Merit Scholarships. Also coming forward to congratulate the group is their principal, Dr. Baron Davis, and Director of Guidance, Teresa Farrell.
That's just taking a picture.
Congratulations. Blythewood High School senior Kelly Kennedy has earned a corporate-sponsored National Merit Scholarship financed by the Snyder Electric North America Foundation. Corporate sponsors provide National Merit Scholarships to finalists who are children of their employees, who are residents of communities the company serves, or who plan to pursue college majors or careers the sponsor wishes to encourage. And Ms. Cunningham would have been here joining you tonight, but she is unable to be here. Congratulations. Now, we will recognize National Achievement Scholars, Rahima Thomas of Blythewood High School and Jasmine Graham of Spring Valley High School. I don't believe that they are here. They receive the National Achievement Scholarship, and each will receive $2,500. These scholarships are awarded to promising African-American students based on preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test scores, as well as abilities, accomplishments, and potential for success in rigorous college studies. Dr. Baron Davis is accepting on his students' behalf. There's one final scholar that we wish to recognize again, and unfortunately, the recipient, Courtney Noe of Spring Valley High School, could not be here to accept it. Ms. Noe is one of 141 accomplished students from across the country that has been named a 2013 Presidential Scholar. She is traveling. She is traveling to Washington, D.C., where on Friday she will receive a Presidential Scholar Medalion, and Dr. Davis has accepted her certificate. Next, I would like to recognize student athletes from the Blythewood High School Track and Field Team. By placing first at the South Carolina State 4A Championship Meet, they have been named state champions for their events. Devin Alvert is the state champion in the 100-meter dash with a time of 10.67 seconds. And Devin, along with Austin Dodd, Darius Wilson, and DeAndre Fletcher, are state champions in the 4x100-meter relay with a time of 41.77 seconds. Joining them is Coach Andre Cook. The Spring Valley High School Track and Field Team also had a great season with several state finishes. The 4x800-meter relay team of Bradley Gibson, Tom Hoefel, Connor McCormick, and Terrell Simmons set a new state record with a time of 7:45.28. Connor brought home first in the 800-meter with a time of 1:54.75. And Richard Fish is the pole vault champion with his 14.06 vault. Joining them are Coach Jones and Dr. Davis. Getting a lot of attention, Dr. Davis. The Spring Valley Boys Track and Team combined its efforts into dominating team victory to become the 2013 4A Track and Field State Champions. Congratulations also to the Spring Valley Track Team coaching staff of Chip Belka, Rick Crumpler, Joe Pascal, Joe Tomlin, Drew Jacobs, Kurt Green, Chris Royster, and Kamal Marshall. The team ended up with a regular season record of 43-0, four region championships, three state runner-up trophies, and one state championship. And there's more. There's more. The icing on the cake here is Coach Jones, who's coached the Boys Track Team at Spring Valley for more than 30 years, has been named the 2013 State Track and Field Coach of the Year by the South Carolina Athletic Coaches Association. He was also inducted into the South Carolina Track and Cross Country Coaches Hall of Fame in 2005 and the South Carolina Athletic Coaches Hall of Fame in 2007. Congratulations, Coach Jones. as Certified Educational Office Employee by the National Association of Educational Office Professionals. They are all members of the association's Richland County chapter. Those recognized are Melody Butler, Administrative Assistant in the Administrative Services Department, Lisa Phala, Administrative Assistant at Muller Road Middle School, Tracy Harden, Administrative Assistant at Condor Elementary Arts Integrated Magnet School, Sheila Pope, Administrative Assistant in the Special Education Department in the Academics Division, and Maia Williams, Administrative Assistant also in the Academics Division. Congratulations again to all of our honorees. And now, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I would like to turn the proceedings over to our Chief Academic Officer, Sumalet, for the Student Focus.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Riley Stevens. We're delighted to have tonight a group of young people who have been in a program now since their seventh grade. This is a GEAR Up federally-funded program, and here tonight, we have Kristen C. and four, I believe, of her students who are going to come and talk to you what it has meant to them to be a part of this particular program.
Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing us to speak to each of you about the GEAR Up program that we have at four of our high schools. Richland 2 has been very lucky to have the GEAR Up grant. We have currently had it for five years, and we are entering our last year. Through the GEAR Up program, we have been able to offer all of our students in our cohorts that began at three middle schools in seventh grade, and we have followed them to high school. These students are now entering their senior year, and I feel like a mama who's getting ready to kick her baby birds out of the nest. We have asked a student from each of the high schools that GEAR Up is located at to share a component of the program and how it has helped them, and we asked them to really just speak from the heart. So with further ado, these are four amazing students, one from each of the GEAR Up high schools, and first will be Arian Bright.
Hello, my name is Arian Bright, and I am a senior, and I attend Westwood High School. My journey with College Matters all started at my orientation to Westwood, and Ms. Parker, my sponsor, had a table set up there, and my mother told me to go there, and I really did not want to. I didn't want to go to it all, and once I went over there, I heard about it, and then she mentioned that there was a three-day training during my summer to learn about GEAR Up, and then I most definitely didn't want it to go. But I went and had an amazing time. I learned a lot of key factors that are going to help me with college, and I knew nothing about college. I thought I was going to be a freshman for forever, but now I'm a senior, and College Matters has really taught me a lot of leadership skills and has really helped me speak in front of people because I'm very shy. Those leadership skills would be determination, commitment, and time management. I've had the privilege to mentor students at my school during every advisory on Wednesdays, where we talk about College Matters and key factors of college that could help the students. College Matters has made me a better person because I...so many things. I've learned...I've learned...oh my God, I've just learned so much. I've learned about college, period. I've learned the things that I need to have in order to go to college. I've learned to speak in front of people better, and I've learned to pass my knowledge on to others and help others. Just so much. I've had the experience to mentor students and be that role model that others need in order to have the experience to go to college. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Elijah Swetnum, and I'm a senior at Blythewood High School. And personally, GEAR Up has allowed me to go to several colleges throughout the state of South Carolina, and specifically, it's helped me find the college that I want to, which is the College of Charleston. And it's just been this kind of experience where honestly, I didn't want to go to any of the trips until they mentioned there's free food, which is when I really started to pick up going to the trips. And it was a good experience going to all the colleges. Specifically, I remember Coastal, Clemson, and Charleston, which were my top schools that I wanted to go to. And GEAR Up just helped me find the path straight to college, which was good enough for me. Thank you.
I'm a little taller. Good evening. My name is Sherman Jones, and I'm the rising senior class president at Ridge U High School. And I've had the pleasure of being with Ms. C. since my seventh-grade year at Summit Parkway Middle School, and I have to admit, it's going to be very hard to say goodbye, Ms. C. You've been such a great help in the process of finding the college for me. It all started in seventh grade, when she pushed me to take the Duke Tip SAT, and because of that, I do have this medal. I was in the top 2% in the state of South Carolina on the Duke Tip SAT scores. With tutoring and help with my classes and pushing me to take more tests in eighth grade, GEAR Up offered us the Explorer Test, which is sort of like a practice ACT, and I got a perfect score thanks to Ms. C. And throughout more tutoring and more supplies. With more tutoring, more help, more supplies, and more pushing, because what student likes tests, she compelled me to take the ACT at Ridge U my junior year that just passed, and I got a 32 my first time, and that 32... That 32 has resulted in Clemson University here in South Carolina offering me provisional acceptance. And I couldn't have done any of those amazing achievements without the help of Ms. C. and the GEAR Up program. I mean, just everything about my journey finding a college like Clemson and the college trips to Johnson C. Smith and Wentworth University and a lot of colleges throughout the state and even out-of-state sometimes. I don't think I could have gone through high school the way I did or so successfully without the help of the GEAR Up program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melanie Jones, and I know you're going to be surprised, but I'm not a student. That's my son, Sherman Jones, and I just wanted to give you the parent's perspective. I actually benefited from the fairs, the field trips, the preparation, the workshops. It's made a huge difference because I've already put one child through school, and it's a nightmare. It's actually a harrowing experience for the parent when you're not sure what it is you're supposed to do, and then you're faced with all these deadlines. So I feel better equipped, I feel more knowledgeable, I feel more confident. I feel it's a phenomenal difference that it makes to actually ensure that our parents are more empowered to make better decisions for our children's future. I feel very, very positive about my child's college career that's coming up, and I owe it all to GEAR. GEAR Up, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kira Anderson, and I'm a rising senior at Richland Northeast High School. As a Palmetto Center for the Arts, Ivy, Horizon Magnet student, and participant in both the varsity volleyball and varsity lacrosse teams, I have a little time after school. However, throughout high school, GEAR Up has provided numerous opportunities in the summer and on the weekends to help me figure out colleges and even careers that I might be interested in. For example, as a result of attending the Chamber of Commerce Business Week at Presbyterian College, I learned how beautiful and enjoyable the campus at Presbyterian College is, something I would not have learned without GEAR Up. The Powerful Women Summit is another opportunity that GEAR Up provided for me that impacted me greatly. The summit helped me realize how important it is to set high goals for myself so that I could achieve great things. The summit also inspired me to do the best that I can while I can do loving what I do. Lessons that have helped me achieve things that I didn't know I was able to do. I could create a list of opportunities that GEAR Up has provided for me. However, it'd be the longest list of my life. GEAR Up has provided many opportunities that have benefited me in a way that I will never forget, and I am truly grateful for the opportunity to be a part of this magnificent grant. Thank you.
Just in closing, I would also like to say that GEAR Up is a great program, but GEAR Up really does take every person in this district. It takes the principals at our high schools, the assistant principals, the staff at the district office, Susan Parker, Linda Rail, Emma Waugh, Arlene Bakoudas, who wrote the grant, board members who have come and spoken to our children. It is really a fabulous opportunity, but it does take every person in our grant, and I would really like to thank everyone in Richland 2 for this opportunity. Thank you.
What a great report that was, and it makes you feel good to hear of young people who are successful. Okay, this is our first session of public participation tonight. Did anyone sign up? I don't think so. We have a moment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? If you see no hands, we'll move on. Okay. Executive Session Items. Let's go to Student Appeals.
I have that.
Do I hear a motion on student appeals?
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to run through them. Student number one, recommend Blythewood Academy. Student number two, Blythewood Academy. Student number four, Blythewood Academy. Number five, Blythewood Academy. Six, Anna Boyd. Seven, Anna Boyd.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. As soon as it comes up on your screen, we'll vote. Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero. I don't believe there's any more votable items on our executive session items. Okay, next item is 10. Item 10, Old Business Action Requested. 10.1, Approval of Remedies to Policy, GCCGDC, Employee Personal Leaves and Absences. I believe we discussed that last time. Do we hear a motion?
I move approval, Mr. Chair.
That is a motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Okay, this is the time now we can have discussion if there's...is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Tracy, can you just briefly point out those recommended changes that we made or requested last meeting and where they are now, please?
Okay, on the third page of the policy, we added some language saying that an employee must provide a healthcare provider statement within five working days, and we added the language saying unless the district receives notice that the employee has experienced severe extenuating circumstances. We then took out some language related to employees having to notify their supervisor or principal... or principal in the afternoon of each day of absence, and basically said reasonable and appropriate notice must be provided. But folks can arrange, make arrangements in advance to cover certain time periods. We did allow, for, on the page, on my copy, it's page five, we added grandparents and grandchildren to our definition of immediate family, that would grant, we would grant those folks three days leave of absence with pay, and those days can be increased up to six days in unusual or special circumstances. And aside from that, we just had some changes from our old program of our application of e-leve. We've changed that to my HR to be current with what the application is that we are using.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other questions from Mr. Manning? Hearing none, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and vote on the motion. Everybody vote. There it goes. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next item is item 10-2, approval of general fund salary increase, and this is an administration, administrative request by the Finance Department. Mr. Davis, I'm going to go ahead and send it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, you recall that in the budget for next year, the board has approved 2% pay raise for all employees, keeping with the board's past practices. The challenge for our payroll department, though, is that with the schedule of board meetings, after this meeting, you won't have another meeting till latter part of July, and county councils delaying third reading on their budget proposal till next week, and the conference committee working on the state budget, et cetera, you won't be approving the actual budget until your meeting in July. We are asking, just to facilitate matters, and quite honestly, I appeal to Dr. Fleming for my payroll staff. They would like to go ahead and have the payroll authorized by the board tonight, so it would take effect on July 1st, and we could move forward. If the board chose not to do that, we would have the payroll rolling forward into July. Then when the board did act, we would have to do a retro pay back to July 1st, then we'd have to do an adjustment pay for following periods to smooth it out for the rest of the year. And so again, we don't foresee any difficulties with anything the council, county council may do, or for that matter, the state legislature. And we're asking the board to merely authorize the implementation of the 2% pay rose effective July 1st. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good explanation, I believe. Is there any questions for Mr. Davis at this time?
Mr. Chairman? Not a question, but I guess a suggestion. Would it be appropriate to authorize the increase contingent upon those factors playing out, playing out as Mr. Davis has suggested and is hoping that they play out? Therefore, if the state decides not to do 2%, for whatever reason, I don't think that will happen, but in the event they do not do approve a 2%, that it would be clear that the adjustment would be automatically made, and we would not be assuming a 2% at the district level when the state did not award that.
Okay, that's, we haven't made a motion yet.
It sounds like I thought he was making a motion.
I was starting, I wanted to just pose it as a, as a comment first, and I'd be happy to make it in a form of...
Is that, is that okay, Mr.?
Dr. Fleming, ladies and gentlemen, that would be fine.
But most likely, we're going to just have one adjustment on the first, instead of, but we know if we don't do this, we will be doing bookkeeping, we'll have two adjustments if we don't do that.
And ladies and gentlemen, if the world did die in some dramatic fashion, of course we'd be coming back to the board.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So move with the former statement just made as a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Second the former statement.
Okay. Now, any discussion? Okay. Hearing that, I believe we can craft this exactly the way we, the motion is, which, you got it, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, we do. Thank you very, very much.
Okay, all those, let's go ahead with the motion. Very good. Seven to zero, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis, where do we stand with regards to the step increase as it relates to pay increases in this conversation?
Mr. Jackson, the step increase is included in the 2%, because we're giving the 2% for all employees. If you're eligible for a step, you get the step. If your step is less than 2%, you get 2%. If your step is more than 2%, you get more than 2%. And if you aren't eligible for a step, you still receive a 2%. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good clarification. Any others? Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Next, we go to item 11, which is no action requested, which is our informational item on the common, our third presentation of Common Core standards. In part three, we'll be discussing assessment. Dr. Broshue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be more of a focus on the assessment portion of the Common Core, and I know that Sue Mallett has some folks that are going to be presenting with her this evening, and we are certainly hoping to answer your questions and, and receive your comments.
Thank you, Dr. Broshue. I'd like to introduce Dave Foster, who is our Language Arts Coordinator, and he's going to be leading the charge tonight. But we have just about everybody in academics there, and Jeff Potts can answer any questions for you that you may have.
Good evening.
How are you, Dave?
Tonight, I'd like to share a couple of things about the packet that you received earlier, and then move into what we do know about the upcoming assessment. The highlights of the assessment that were in the packet you received. We identified the assessment challenges facing our district as we embrace the Common Core standards. And we wanted to share a perspective of the characteristics of assessment from the past, and look at those in relationship to the demands of assessment that are coming in the future. We've also looked carefully at providing valid, reliable, and fair assessment of all students, including special populations. In the second slide, the assessment items included various components of the Common Core standards, including interim assessment, formative assessment practices, and summative assessment, and a new aspect of performance tasks. Additional information was also shared about the proposed online reporting of assessment outcomes to the district. The third and fourth areas in which information was shared addresses the use of computer adaptive technology in both the interim and the summative assessments, an update on meeting the technology demands built into the assessment, and finally, the timeline of the Smarter Balanced Assessment Tonight, we'd like to share some additional information related to the Smarter Balanced Assessment System. I apologize for the size of the slide, but I would love to draw your attention to that. This graphic provides some sense of the expectations we can have for the assessment components that'll be in place 2014, 2015. Throughout this year and next, we have the opportunity to provide formative assessment within the instructional program through practices that are aligned with the Common Core Assessment System. This may include interim assessments from Smarter Balance that reflect clear, specific examples of the expected performance as outlined in the standards, and include a variety of question types. Typically, the assessment in the past has been all multiple choice and perhaps an extended writing item. They will now include performance tasks that are reported out, and the nice part about this is they'll be reported out from those interim assessments on the same scale as the summative assessment will be at the end of the year in 2014. This information will be used to, from the interim assessments, to guide our instruction and identify where additional professional learning may need to be taken. The summative assessment will be administered during the last 12 weeks of the school year, and will include both the computer adaptive test and the performance task at all grade levels 3 through 8 and 11. To provide a clearer picture of the assessment items, I'd like to use this graphic for an oral explanation, and then I'm going to move to the Smarter Balance website, so that you have some examples of that. It's virtually impossible for you to read that, but let me take you through the five items. A selected response, which is similar to multiple choice items, except students may be asked to make multiple possible choices of a correct answer for an item. In the constructed response, there's both a short constructed paragraph and an extended response that require anywhere from one word to multiple paragraphs or an essay. There are technology-enhanced items. These require that the student manipulate points on a screen, drop and drag items from one location to another, or even highlight portions of a text. The last item is a performance task, and it measures a student's ability to integrate their knowledge, their skills, and analysis through various required steps of a process to create a final product that demonstrates their level of understanding.
Let me just interrupt. Is all this done on a computer?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I wanted.
Let me take that back.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
It is proposed to be done on a computer. That initial year, there may be some students taking a paper test, but otherwise...
Exactly, but that's where we're going.
Yes, sir. We are going computer. The last thing I would like to do is take you to the Smarter Balanced website. Smarter Balanced is the company that will handle the assessment process for South Carolina and approximately 24 other states. I'm going to show you a couple of examples of English Language Arts items, so that you get a sense of here's exactly what a student is expected to do. You'll see on the left, a chunk of text, and I apologize for the word chunk, a text passage. And Shelley, if you'll scroll down that middle bar, that gives you an approximate identification of the length of the text. Across from that, the student is asked to type an answer to that question, and here's the key, they're to use details from the text to support their answer. Students have not been asked to do that in the past. It's typically been a multiple choice item with no justification of how did you get that answer. They now give a response and give supporting chunks of text that will support their answer. Shelley, if you go up and open that box where it's above that, please. Yep. And if you will go to Grandma Ruth, number two. Thank you. The same text passage, a different question, and here's what the student has to do with it. At the bottom, on the right-hand side, you'll see where it says, click on two phrases from the paragraph that helps you understand the meaning of scarred. And scarred is underlined in that passage. Shelley, if you will underline the following, or excuse me, click on the following things for me. It had dog bite marks, it's the second line, in the, on the right-hand side. And if you will drop down, fraying seams, next line down, first, okay, good. And it was smudged now and faded in the fourth line. Good. As you can see, the student will click on the text, and Shelley, if you'll go back and highlight, it had dog bite marks, good. Now, in that far upper right-hand corner, if, let's get an item score. I cheated, and I practiced this one for several times. It says, the student selected two or more correct phrases. This passage was a two-point question, and because the student answered three correct answers, they got the full two points. Had they not gotten all three, they would have received one point for any correct answer. If they had highlighted all incorrect answers, they would have gotten zero.
Let me ask you again.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this, do we do anything like this now?
We do some of this now through map testing, except it's multiple choice. Now, from an assessment standpoint, outside of that, we are practicing in classrooms doing exactly this kind of task. Yes, sir. That's exactly what we're doing.
Excuse me for interrupting.
No, please.
If I don't do this, I'll forget, I'll forget.
I understand.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
While you're on pause. Are they going to have increased time to do this now because of the reading? I'm not sure what it was like before, but having to read that long statement and then do a paragraph and all that stuff you just explained, will they have longer time to do the test than what they've had in the past, just on...
Typically, Ms. Anderson, we have text on the assessments that are that long right now, and handwritten responses. Specifically, to answer your question, the difference in the Smarter Balance is that it will be a timed test. Currently, in our multiple choice items, it's an untimed test. A student can have the length of time they need to select multiple choice answers. The Smarter Balanced test is designed to be a timed test. Chunks of reading are approximately the same length as they currently are. The kinds of responses they're going to give are similar. The way in which they identify them is what's going to be different. So we've got to provide ample practice for kids to learn how to do that within a shorter timeframe, so that we're measuring their reading skills or their writing skills, not their keyboarding skills.
Okay, because from what I was understanding...
Yes, ma'am.
...as you explained, that they will not only read, but then they will have to do the paragraph, a story...
Yes, ma'am.
...summarize, and then they'll have to go and look up different words, meanings or whatever, highlight those words. So what you were saying prior to this test...
Prior to this test, they would have read the same sample text there, and they would have had multiple choice items that they would have selected rather than clicking on it and highlighting it. That's one...
So they would have multiple choice, and they were not writing an essay?
Yes, ma'am, they were.
They were, okay.
They were. They were writing a short response and writing an extended response both.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, go ahead, Barbara.
I'm sorry.
Is the timer of the test, or is that just by the person giving it?
It's by the person giving it, and according to the directions for this, excuse me, I'm sorry, according to the directions for this sample item, the teacher would announce, there's 15 minutes left in this timeframe for this test, there's five minutes left, there's one minute left. So they'll have three notifications of the timeframe. Okay?
The concern that I have, and I think some other people have as well, is making sure that there is appropriate assistance and what is allowable in terms of appropriate teacher assistance in the process of students using this new mechanism for giving their responses, i.e. some to school district. And so what are we, what are we going to be able to do, and why has it been determined what is acceptable technical assistance, sort of following up on what Ms. Anderson is saying, so that my inability to actually navigate the hardware doesn't impact my intelligence not being able to communicate it and using my keyboard skills?
Great question. Here's what we do know. This year, Smarter Balance has proposed that they will have an interim assessment available to all school districts. And that will include multiple sample items, so that they're practice-able in classrooms by teachers first, and then by students along with them. And they're supposed to be scoreable, so that we can give feedbacks. And they're supposed to be scoreable so that we can give feedbacks, feedback, excuse me, to students along the way, so we know that they're understanding what the directions are in advance of taking the real assessment. We're supposed to have those, they said, by the 2013-2014 school year. There's also currently a sample test available. I've gone through it. There's some technical difficulty with it right now, and it is not on our end, it is on their end, and it may well be from hundreds of people accessing that. But we'll have more than ample opportunity to practice exactly scenarios that will mimic exactly the testing.
I guess what makes me nervous, though, is that teachers and students are going to be getting it, getting it at the same time. It would have been wonderful if teachers were getting it this summer, and that were one of those workshops and that beautiful document you guys distributed a couple of weeks ago, so that they could have a heads-up and a step up on their own level of comfort. Because I remember a lot of teachers from the previous survey saying they were, their level of comfort with doing this is one level, but in terms of resources and assistance being available, a much lower level, so...
Couple of the things that we are doing, Mr. Jackson, if it'll help, at the elementary level specifically, these kinds of examples are being created by teachers, so that there's a selection where a text and students, and copies of it right next to it, and students are highlighting, or they're clicking on it to determine their responses to questions, and they're doing that during workshop time and reading right now, this school year, and will continue to do that next school year in anticipation of the test the following year. So we're building those ourselves. As soon as we get them from Smarter Balance, I promise you, they will be in place in the classrooms.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll stop for now.
Mr. Chairman, I actually do have one follow-up question, and I don't want to gloss over another point that was brought up, and it's our students readiness with the equipment. It's been brought to my attention, as much as we think our students are digital natives, that we do have some that struggle with the equipment, and I don't know if we have opportunities over the summer, or how, you know, how are we preparing those students to be equipment-ready when it gets in their hands?
Excellent question, Mr. Manning. And actually, we've started some this year. The Technology Department has put together, I believe it's four different choices for elementary schools to begin to use with students from kindergarten through fifth grade that are practice kinds of keyboarding, technology proficiency practice. Those are being used in the regular classroom as well as in the computer labs when those are available. The target needs to be that they're utilized in regular classrooms so that they're available throughout the day. They're currently in place right now, and we continue to, we anticipate that continued use next year as well.
So basically during school time, we don't have anything this summer lined up, an opportunity where they might be able to take advantage of that?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Thank you.
So when did our students actually start preparing for this?
Some students started last year.
When you say some students...
Most elementary students started last year. We wanted to start, and what grade level is it? K1 and 2 in anticipation of that kindergarten class will be the first group of third graders in 2014, 2015 to take the new assessment.
So the ones that are going to be the first...
That worry kindergartners, they're now going into second grade. They'll go into second grade this school year.
So they will be the first ones who will take the test?
As third graders.
And therefore, they have been the first ones who've been training for the particular test, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the following year, how do you plan to, I need like an implementation timetable? What are you planning to do from, for the following year? So next year, the test is, is in place?
Okay, not next year. 2014, 2015.
Fifteen, right, okay. So what, have we implemented a timetable?
Yes, ma'am. We gave that, we gave that to you last, our last session of the professional development opportunities that we're going to continue with.
Okay, so that we can feel comfortable that everyone will be comfortable when their turn comes to take this, the pass?
As comfortable as they possibly can be, yes, ma'am.
Right, okay. And all of the teachers have been trained for this, correct?
Introduced, yes, ma'am, they're going through that process. Today, we had a implementation, school-level implementation team meeting with all of our high school and middle schools and with our elementary schools as well, implementation teams from all of our schools. We targeted English Language Arts and Math first, because that's where the assessment will take place, starting this summer, yes, today. We've included the math, science, physical education, art, music, PE, all of the above will be involved in, in those professional development opportunities. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so let me ask a question to all of you. What do you think is going to be the most difficult thing that we need to do, that we have not done, or what, what we're doing? What is the most difficult thing that you foresee in this new test? Any of you can answer.
I think the first thing is completing a performance task. That is a significant difference than we've asked our students to complete in the past. However, I think it's also extremely healthy from this standpoint. It's a clear demonstration of a student's understanding of what they're doing, given this real-life task. That's something our kids have never done in the past. And there's not a one right answer to getting that problem solved. There's multiple avenues, and the student gets credit for demonstrating their knowledge of getting there in very different ways. So I think that's one huge difference. I think our need is to help our teachers practice those kinds of instructional assessments now and through, way beyond 2014. It's exactly what we've been preparing for over the last three to four years. So it's coming to fruition in this assessment. So I think we're excited about it.
I thought we just started recently preparing for it.
Okay. We have, but instructional strategies that had nothing to do, before Common Core was even conceived, we were preparing for those kinds of instructional practices. Now the Common Core is here, and that is exactly what they're asking of our kids. We are well on target, so I'm very excited about it. And that's a huge difference than what we've had to expect in the past. And that's, that's not only a performance task in the English Language Arts assessment, but also a performance task in the math assessment. And there are things every single content-related teacher can do to help support those.
Ms. Anderson, if I may, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Correct. So tagging on what Dave was saying, we were prepared to show you a fourth-grade performance task, and I'm going to pass these around, so you have a paper copy, and you can see the, a level of difficulty and rigor, and I'll tell you what we've been doing with project-based learning, that collaboration, integrating, you're going to see more of that. We're going to, as I said, one of the sessions, more student talking and asking questions and less teacher talk. That's something that's going to have to change, particularly with our upper grades.
And so the professional development that we've been a part of for the last several years really tie right back into this, this particular assessment.
Great. So another question that's, I really want to know, are we doing any test-taking strategies? Are having any classes on test-taking strategies for some of our students, particularly students who have difficulty in taking tests? I know particularly African-Americans have difficulty in test-taking sometimes because of various reasons, anxiety, difference in cultures and all that good stuff. So is there going to be some type of class that kids can sign up to for take testing, testing, testing strategies? For instance, myself, I can know everything that you've taught me and rattle it out to you, but the minute you tell me I have 60 minutes to do this test, I couldn't tell you my name. And so USC had to send me to a test-taking strategy, and once I learned self-hypnosis, relaxation, I just blew them out of the water. But it was, this lady had a very southern, drawn-out accent, and when she would say, "Y'all," I couldn't tell you my name. So I'm just wondering if that's something that we might need to do with some of our, is that a course we can offer students who have difficulties in taking tests?
Yes, ma'am, and we currently have in place some of those examples for SAT, ACT...
I know for SAT that I'm talking about.
For those.
For the Common Core, since this is coming up.
And I think what's, what's probably even better than providing courses for students who've demonstrated they can't, is that in the instructional practices every day, we're addressing those kinds of strategies, so that a student feels comfortable in the classroom doing those, so that when they do get to a testing scenario, it's not going to be different.
It's going to be different, because I went through it.
Correct.
When she said that, "Y'all, y'all got 60 minutes, y'all, I'm telling y'all, got..."
Yes, ma'am.
And when you hear somebody say that, "Y'all," you know, it's the little things that can switch your mind and just throw you totally off course. So I'm just wanting every child to be successful. And so because it happened to me, it happened to other people, I just want to make sure that we are providing whatever means necessary for all of our children to have an opportunity to be successful in it. It's why I'm bringing it up.
I can't imagine.
I know you're, I trust that you're doing, you know, everything that you can, but that may be one of the things that we might also need to look at, is preparing these children who may have anxiety when it comes down to a test. Because in the classroom, you're teaching them, but when they get to that point where they're being told, you've got 60 minutes, and then you have 15 minutes left, you have 10 minutes left, people panic, because they just think, oh, my God, and I, you know, so I'm, that's what I'm asking, if that's something we might want to look at doing, so that every child will have an opportunity to be, to be successful.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Mallett, the, I know that a number of states got the Race to the Top money, and that helped them probably put them a little further along in the process. What's your level of comfort with regards to the number of, I hate to call them trainers, but I don't know a better word to call them, teacher trainers, those that are either at the district level or at some level, who are investing right now, the time, so that they can sort of be able to train the masses when we come back in about two months from now? So I, as I said, I was talking, shoot, that may be a HR question, but I want to know that there are enough people who, generalization is a good, sort of what I'm hearing, but that are specifically trained in content and the ability to actually teach others how to administer the test via online. What is the level of comfort, and is that a need? Because I don't want us to hear later on that we didn't have enough trained trainers in place, that all of the teachers didn't have an opportunity to get saturated with this before 2014.
Well, as you know, Mr. Jackson, South Carolina was one of the last states to adopt it, so we, and we did not receive the Race to the Top money. But having said that, we are making a very concerted effort to make sure that everyone on our staff, as well as outside consultants, we had one in today, she'll be back later this month, and she'll be working with us and with our implementation teams. We are sending, planning to send folks to conferences, as several of you requested, that we are putting a great deal of our federal and state funds for professional development toward Common Core. But again, what we're doing is really changing the way teachers have been teaching, and this collaboration, this integration, it's no longer the teacher, English teacher, and then the math teacher, it's everybody together. So we're, we're working toward that, and we will look at every possibility and every avenue and find as many opportunities for these folks to get where they can be comfortable. We don't have the test yet, all we have is, you know, some of the sample items, and we are currently using those and learning, all of us in academics are learning how to do that, so that we can be conversant with our teachers.
And so then the next step after that happens, and the next step is, you then are going to go and be, you're going to have schools assigned to groups of folk and teachers in those schools that will literally sit down and have sessions, like I heard the math teacher from Spring Valley talk about a couple of weeks ago, and bring them in to talk about it in that, at that level of specificity?
We certainly can. Our middle schools and elementary schools have half-days this year, and I'm hoping that most of them will choose to spend those half-days collaborating, working together on Common Core, and we stand ready to, to work with that at each school, so yes.
You were sounding real good, too. You said that last day, we stand ready to do it.
Oh.
I hope we'll be a little more proactive than that.
Okay, well, we are, we are, we are.
Great, thank you, thank you.
I have one question, just looking at the implementation timeline, once you implement it, you have nothing in plan after that. So does anybody have a plan in place?
Yes, ma'am. Those, and during that 2014-2015, I think it says in both of them, continued professional development and will, and, and once we receive the results from the first assessment, we're going to have a clearer picture of now where do we need to go? Where, where are there some areas of fabulousness as a result on the test? And where do we really need to take a look at the instructional practices or additional areas of concern? And until we get there, like, we can't anticipate what some of those are going to be, but we're certainly not going to stop what we're doing all along the way as well.
So when is...
That's what those arrows are for.
Maybe I just missed this, so what year will you actually have the results from the test?
At the end, excuse me, at the end of the 2014-2015 year, we will have results. Now, I can't tell you how quickly after that assessment, because the assessment's done the last 12 weeks of that school year, this, the summative assessment is.
That's in the same year you're doing the implementation? You said 2014, 2015?
2015, yes, ma'am. That's the...
And that's when the full implementation goes in?
No, ma'am, the full implementation goes into effect this August, 2013-2014, at all grade levels.
Mr. Chair, so, but the implementation goes in this year, but we haven't, everybody's not fully trained going into this year?
I beg your pardon? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
My understanding is that everybody is not fully trained going into this year, but you're saying we are fully implementing this year?
Yes, sir.
That doesn't line up for me.
The standards are being fully implemented.
But our teachers aren't already, aren't trained going into this year? We didn't train them this year, expecting them going in full bore next year?
Yes, sir, we did.
So every teacher's had a training opportunity this year?
Every English Language Arts and every mathematics teacher has, yes, sir.
So they're, they're fully ready for Common Core going into next year?
I won't ever say they're fully ready, but they've got the ability to begin the school year delivering to those standards, yes, sir.
And how are we ensuring at the classroom level that this is, that these are, standards are being taught to and being done? Have we changed our teacher, our classroom assessments to look for these kinds of things?
Exactly what we're going through this summer, working with teachers during our summer professional development. We've also done it this school year, the alignment, the elementary, K through five, we've already put those things in place this school year.
So principals have on a checklist, when they go through, they're checking for Common Core assessments and standards and other things are being done?
Yes, sir. And that's part of what we're trying to get them...
So that, that's been, that is done and ready for next year?
The checklists?
That principals are ready, when they walk into a classroom next year, they're ready to see, have a checklist or some other item that they're prepared to...
For English Language Arts and Mathematics classrooms, yes, sir.
So that's complete?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a copy of what that looks like?
I, I, we're not offering principals a checklist. It's, you have copies of the standards, we're working with them to review them. This is what it looks like in classrooms, this is what you should be seeing in classrooms. They're participating in our workshops. There isn't a checklist like there used to be.
But I don't, I don't see how, and we may not come together today, but I don't see how, as a principal or a leader, somebody who's over a particular subject matter, English language, how, what are they looking for that there's accountability, that those teachers are every day, you know, just like we, currently, you go into a classroom, you look at what is the environment like, are the students engaged, those types of things? is the environment like, are the students engaged, those types of things, which are all checklist items currently on, on walk, on visits to the classroom?
And, and we're looking for standards as well, yes, sir.
So the, these standards are now part of that checklist?
Go ahead.
Let me just add something. Maybe he's talking about the five-minute walkthrough that administrators do when they go through the classes, and they do that five-minute observation. I guess, and James, tell me if I'm correct.
That's correct.
I think what he's asking is, is there any way we can add something similar to Common Core to that five-minute walkthrough that administrators have to conduct monthly with the teachers?
I'm Carol Sample, and I am the Elementary Math Coach, and this is Alishawn, she's the Elementary Literacy Coach. And what we've been doing for the past year or two is we've been going school to school to school, doing grade-level meetings, talking to teachers about the differences in the content. It's a journey, though, there, it's a, there are a lot of differences. But what we did today, right here in this room, we were here at seven o'clock this morning, is we had a Principal Administrator Workshop. And the, the focus was the difference in, in what's gonna look different in math classrooms and ELA classrooms, how it's gonna sound different for kids and teachers. So when they walk through, what will look different? Well, it's gonna look a little, be a little noisier in the math class, you know? It's not gonna just be the teacher standing in front of the room telling, the kids are gonna be talking, they're gonna be sharing strategies, so that the principals got a heavy dose today. But the, I, we don't, I don't have a checklist for them yet, but we're, the new math program that we're gonna adopt does have a new checklist that they're gonna get this summer.
Okay, thank you, that, that's a, I appreciate, that, that answers my question.
Okay.
I was just, Dave said it was done, ready, ready to roll, and I think that-
Well, we have a new math program coming up too. And a lot of it has to, a lot of the big difference, then when you were talking about what's gonna be the hardest thing, is the practices, is, is the instructional practices. Content, teachers can adjust to a little easier than the practices. And that's, that's how it's all gonna kind of come together.
Okay, and that's, and that's what I was asking for, is how, how are we ensuring that, you know, everybody is actually doing? It's one thing to give training, and one thing to ask people to do it, and ask them, "Are you comfortable with it?" It's another on how are we making sure that-
Yeah.
-when we do those walkthroughs, that everybody is doing it to the degree that they need to, or find where they need help? Um, that, and that's what I was getting at, and you answered my question, so thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Barbara has a question.
Um, one question I have, like, when we have the new hires or anyone that transfers into the district, who's gonna be responsible of training them?
Certainly the academics team will be during the summer, yes, ma'am.
Who's the team underneath their team?
School-level teams. And that's the group that met today, not only at the elementary level, but also at the middle and the high school. Six to seven members at each team.
And just to clarify, we have been working with alignment teams that we talked about last time. So when we're talking about developing these teams, we're looking at teacher leaders at every school. So Carol and I have been working very closely with the elementary schools and working with groups of teachers. They're helping write those alignment documents, looking at instructional practices, the resources we have in our district, and we'll have those ready by the end of the summer. But those teams, we're trying to build capacity. So we work with these teams over and over again, because it's, we need their help in the schools. And they're on different grade levels, so we have strong first-grade teams and second-grade teams that will help us lead teachers forward with this.
Ms. Anderson asked a really important question, no, made an important comment, when she talked about making sure, and I want to expand it a little bit, making sure that the students who are struggling get the assistance they need to make sure they have a level of comfort. And I guess to expand on that question, broaden it a little bit, and that is to make sure that the teachers also feel that same level of comfort. I think it's, I think it's vitally important. Unfortunately, we're sort of behind the eight ball a little bit because of the, the clock ticking on us, so I applaud what you're doing in trying to run, you know, Race to the Top. We're trying to race to two, 2014 right now as a district, that's what we're racing to do, meet it. And that's a challenge, and I realize that. Just make sure that if there are needs for additional, and I was sort of putting you on the spot a little bit, Ms. Mallett, if there are needs for any additional resources or any additional, um, team members training that's necessary, that we, that we do that sooner than later. I think Mr. Manning touched on that a couple of weeks ago. We really want to make sure that happens, because that's really critically important, that we not use that as a, as a reason why we didn't do as broad a scope training as we could have done, had we had more resources. We, we don't want to have to have that conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the last question I'm gonna ask, um, who does the scoring of the test?
Part of the test is computer scored. Part of the test is computer scored and human scored. And those team of scorers are trained by the Smarter Balance organization. One of the things I'm hoping to get the opportunity to do shortly, and they'll, they'll be letting us know it around the twentieth of this month, is becoming an item writer for the Smarter Balance assessment, because they want to grow that pool. And I'm hoping to be one of those people, so that we'll know, here's not only what a test item looks like, here's how it's being scored, and here are the kinds of answers we're looking for. Actually, there are several people who've applied for that from the district, so we can bring that knowledge back here. And that's the kinds of strategies we're working with teachers and with kids.
But am I wrong in thinking, though, that even with that, we can't, we won't be able to score them, teachers won't be able to score them in the classroom?
They will not be able to score them.
And so that, so the-
Test security.
I understand that, but the point is, in terms of figuring out how well students are doing, they won't be able to know that in order to make any sort of modifications until they take it live for the first time.
We have a good idea of the kinds of tests, um, excuse me, the kinds of items that are gonna be asked, the kinds of questions and the way in which they're gonna be asked. So we do have a way of measuring, are our kids ready to do this kind of test assessment that's different? We do have a way to do that, yes, sir.
The other states that are, that have already implemented this and have scoring, have they had any computer scoring issues?
To my knowledge, there was a field test done, I don't know, let me get the terms right, there was a pilot test, I've gotta get the right terminology. The pilot test was administered this year. I don't believe the results are back from that pilot test, so there's no feedback on, here's what happened, here's what didn't happen, particularly with scoring concerns, 'cause I'm sure every state's gonna have those issues and, and concerns. Because we're banking a lot of decisions on some scores that you want to make sure they're valid. We're hoping this year that the field test comes to South Carolina and that we can participate in that, if for no other reason than to get a better taste of, here's what it looks like, here's how it's being administered, here's some timeframes. We, we do have to address those concerns. We'd love to be a part of that. I'm not sure what influence, if any, that we have locally, that's typically done at a state level, so we're pushing for it.
I think that's something-
It is, indeed.
-you guys should really push for, because I have just recently taken tests that were computer-issued, and if the students wouldn't have gone back and noticed, we've gotten the answers wrong when they were actually right. And I, I can see this happening.
And, and that's one of the reasons why we want to be a part of those teams.
Especially since only one of it, half of it's gonna be human scored as well?
We have some items from some other states that they've created, and, and we're gonna use those as well to do those kinds of determinations here, so, thank you.
Is there anything in the interim that we can do for students to be able to adjust to computerized testing even before we get to Smarter Balance? On a, on a regular basis?
Yes, sir, I think so. And Carol's got some things, um, excuse me, Alice has some things that she's done in, with the elementary reading teachers that they're doing in test, and I'm sure Tom has an answer that he wants to follow up with shortly as well.
I think, um, well, the, the good news is, is that with the one-to-one computing project, we have a lot of experience right now with teachers, students doing a lot of things with computers. Uh, that's the good news. And one of the things that we're also working with the schools on is expanding that exposure to technology at K one and two levels. And in fact, we're expanding the, um, the one-to-one program to grade two for, for next school year, which means that those, those students in second grade will, will, will not have a one-to-one, they'll have a four-to-one, uh, uh, expansion of the, of the one-to-one computing, if you will, to give them, um, project-based exposure to keyboarding skills, highlighting text skills, being able to drag-and-drop skills, all of those things that you would expect a student would need to do as part of that assessment. We're also looking at expanding further to first grade, and with our realignment of technology, we expect to be able to add, um, really good coverage of technology at grade kindergarten, first and second. And then clearly at, at third grade going forward, they all have one-to-one computing. So that's the good news in Richland, too. We do have great resources in terms of hardware and software that are, that are available for the students.
I, I think that gets us a, a lot of the way there, but I, I'm still, I, I want to get specifically to the test-taking part of that. You know, I, I remember, uh, with my degree being in sports medicine, you learn, you know, muscle memory, and the only way you get the right muscle memory for your sport is to do it in action, the actual task that you have to do. I'm applying that to test-taking for our students. Are they taking tests on a regular basis on a computer in their classroom in preparation for that being sort of the de facto standard that we'll be judged by in the future?
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Manning, I'll, I'll comment that in Richland, too, we've been delivering computer-adaptive tests since the spring of 2002. And each year in grades two through some elements of high school, students do get the experience of taking the adaptive test on computers. Now, those are different item types, because those are primarily constructed response. However, the interaction with the computer is something that we have a, a longstanding approach with. And back when we first administered MAP test in '02, we had very similar conversations. And there is exposure to keyboards, exposure to other pieces to help them get comfortable with, uh, help students get comfortable with the interaction. Uh, I don't know of the full availability of item types. I think we've done some piloting with constructed response with the Northwest Evaluation Association, which would be some of the, the constructed response items that they refer to, is that correct, Mr. Potts?
Yeah, this, this spring we did do, um, we had some pilot items that students were able to see, um, in grades three through eight. Next year, we're moving to Common Core standards, and there's also gonna be similar types of items that students are gonna see with this technology enhancement that you would see on Common, uh, in the Smarter Balance version of Common Core assessment. NWEA is where it has been working hard to make sure that they are creating kind of mirror images of those types of items. So the students that, uh, in our district will see those kind of items in a formative assessment, uh, not just the types of items in terms of technology and, uh, but also in terms of standards, um, they will be, um, moving towards Common Core standards as well.
Is that, NWA, is that the parent company for MAP?
It is.
And that, is that what you had mentioned, I think, once before, that'll be done like four times a year on a quarterly basis?
We can do it up to four times a year, um, and that is for the, the specific formative assessments. But we can also assess a student at any time with kind of a smaller-scale version of the assessment, which is called the, the MAP Survey Test. And so students can essentially be assessed on that almost at any time.
So we'll have regular, interactive feedback on where our students are in preparation?
Yes, just like we have been for the last couple of years. We'll have current, you know, we'll have a, a system in place where, I think we have three scheduled times that we're doing it throughout next year. I think we have a fall, a winter, and then a spring assessment that are scheduled for next year. But schools can assess up to four times a year, they have that kind of flexibility within their schedule.
Thank you.
And to Ms. Specter's question about students entering the system, uh, with the assessment system that Mr. Potts just described, when we have an intake of a student transferring in, we can sit down and give them the assessment upon entry, so they'll have the exposure as well.
Mr. Manning, one of, one of the, as we're looking at textbook adoptions in the future, um, those are certainly one of the areas in which we're looking to make sure that we have some of those examples that are technology-based for use in the classrooms as well.
And, and I appreciate, and I know I'm pushing a lot on this, but, but I want to go, you know, I know you guys did the survey, "Are you ready?", and I know you've told me you have a good idea, general idea of where we are. You told Mr. Jackson-
Yes, sir.
-that we can kind of get a good idea, but I have nothing concrete. And I want to go from the feel-good, fuzzy, "We think we're ready, everybody's rah-rah", to, "Where are we?" And until I see something in the form of the MAP assessment or something that's concrete, um, until that point, it's a lot of thinking and a lot of feeling, which is fantastic, and we definitely, you know, hope everybody is ready to move in that direction, but we have nothing concrete to tell us where we are until we see that.
I'd like to add, Mr. Manning, if I could, um, and I've mentioned it to a couple of our board members, that we would like to continue this discussion, to give you just some of that information that you've requested, so that you could see where we are periodically. And we're thinking not every single month necessarily, but periodically give you an update, uh, if that's okay with the board.
It's fine with me, yeah.
Mine, I think I said it was my last question, but it's-
I thought you said so, too.
I know, but you know, sometimes when you get seasoned, questions come, continue to come. Mature. And as, and if, after I finish this, if the board wants to continue the presentation, I think everything that you're going over, we have in our board packet. I think that we just had some important questions that we all needed to get answers to. So if you guys want to continue asking, and then you can end your presentation, but let me ask you this, two, two questions. Who pays for the Smarter Balance? The district, right?
As a state.
As a state fund it? So the state mandated something, they fund it? Oh, we better write that down.
Ms. Anderson, my understanding is actually cheaper for the state to administer the Smarter Balance assessment than it was for them to continue on the, on, to, to do pass assessment.
I should have known there was a catch to it. Okay, so with that being said, um, I wonder, can the state send us some, send everybody examples for the children to practice, just like, like a dry run?
We have those on the website.
We already have those.
So all the kids can do that in the classroom?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I missed that somewhere.
Other words, go ahead and send us those PowerPoints.
I did not hear what you said.
Send them the link to this-
Send us that PowerPoint or either the link.
The link to the Smarter Balance.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if we could get the link to that, then perhaps those, maybe I'm the only one that doesn't have a clear picture, then perhaps, once I do that, I can get a clear picture, because I've read all this stuff, everything you're going over. This is good information. And if you would send us the link on that, and we can be assured that our students are going through those links, uh, when school starts back, prior to doing the test.
Ms. Anderson-
That, that makes me feel a lot better.
I apologize. Um, I did include it in your packet, uh, so you've got the web address, but we'll send you the link if you want it, if you prefer it electronically.
Yes.
But it's, it's, I sent it to you.
Okay, that's, that would help me to, I don't know about anybody else, but I think that would, that would be great for me.
Okay, we can do that.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question. Um, the training, you said we've been, the training we've been doing for years has kind of already been in the direction of Common Core, is that correct?
The instructional strategies training, yes.
Instructional strategy, is that through the Schlechtli program, the Schlechtli model?
Some of it.
Some of it?
And some of it not, no, sir.
Okay.
Not all of it.
How much of the Common Core training that we're going through this summer and others is tied to Schlechtli? And the, the reason that I'm asking is, if it, if Schlechtli is aligned to that, I find it curious that Schlechtli also, for a long time, it sort of fought Common Core, had white papers on why Common Core was a bad idea. And so if we're tying our horse to the cart of a program that was against Common Core, I, it just seems like there, there's some conflict there.
I think in terms of the performance task and the skill level that students are asked to perform and demonstrate their knowledge is exactly in line with project-based learning. I believe it is absolutely in line with engaging kids and tasks that they're interested in. I think it also is, is an avenue for demonstrating multiple paths to an answer and not just a single response. I, I do think there's absolutely in line- I do think there's absolutely an alignment between them, yes, sir. And I think the kinds of practices that we've been training teachers on will absolutely support our students' performance in the Common Core standards. One of the, let me just leave it at that.
You don't, I just, I want to have the confidence that the training that we're providing our teachers isn't a bolt-on to the Schlecki, to the Schlecki model in which they were against Common Core, that the training that we're providing is truly integrated and is going to be the most effective opportunities for a teacher. That's what I'm asking for, and you're telling me you're confident in that.
Very confident in that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's wrap, sort of wrap this present. I know we have, we have chased some very good questions, and hopefully, and thanks for answering, all of you answering the questions. If you would sum up, David, what you would like to end, how you'd like to end this presentation on this assessment, Mike?
I think the last thing we want to share with you is that, and Mrs. Mallette has already alluded to this, we'd like to come back periodically, whatever that calendar date may be, to bring you updates. If there are other areas that you still feel need to be addressed, please feel free to let us know, and we'll make accommodations to provide that information. Thank you for these three, we appreciate that. It's helped us significantly, so thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions for David, Mrs. Mallette, or anybody else in the sitting out in the audience tonight? If not, we're going to...
Let me just clarify real quick. Ms. Specter and I were talking, didn't you say the computer will score part and humans will score the other part? So, didn't you also say that there will be multiple correct answers?
Yes, yes.
But they're tests now like that. I mean, that's all I had in dental school, was multiple correct answers. But this...
Wait a minute, Dr. Freeman was talking.
I was just saying, that's not a new concept at all. Maybe due for your age group, which a lot of this assessment is new and more difficult standards.
You gonna let me finish my question?
Yes, I am. But you, I thought you quit two minutes ago.
No, 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 no. I'm a little bit, I need to be straightened out on, there are multiple answers, so then each teacher will have a guide to those answers, and say, what if there's...
The teachers don't score it.
It goes into the computer, the database. We won't be scored.
I think Dr. McDaniel can answer that.
Well, somebody, some human, I thought you said a human would score.
Ms. Anderson, if I may describe one scenario that Smarter Balance will use and other assessment companies have used, on a constructed response item, a paragraph or a longer set of items, it'll collect the feedback. One model is that artificial intelligence can score part of that and generate a score very quickly.
That's right.
They also collect the information and they send it to raters, essay raters that are hired across the country, where they actually hand-score it, enter in the information, and send it back. So, some of the items will be scored in an electronic manner, and some will be scored in a raider manner, and then after the rating is completed, the final score will be available. The, with computer dev tests like MAP, the score is available as soon as the student finishes the assessment. This one will take a little longer because of the use of a human raider.
Okay, in that way, scores will be subject to challenging, being challenged.
Well, I think the fact that they're going to develop rubrics in advance, that they'll be bumping it up against, won't make it as challengeable.
Not as challenging, but...
Not really. Again, I think the rubrics that are going to be in place will be the parameters by which if the answer falls within that parameter, that it becomes very easy to grade that, even if it's a, even if it's a human doing the grading, because they understand that any responses that fall within this range meet the satisfactory answer to the question, if I'm correct, team or whoever. Please, somebody respond.
Okay. I promise you, Mr. Chair, I'm finished.
We're getting ready to go to the next item, so. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, it's very knowledgeable, gained a lot from it.
I didn't even ask for my question, ask my questions, but I'll get to you later. Okay, climate, no action requests, this report on our climate study update. This was a study done over the last year, right, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, Chairman.
And I'm going to turn it over to you to go over the summary that we, and the feedback that we got.
Absolutely, and that's exactly what I'll do, Mr. Chairman, do a quick summary. There's a slide that's on the board for the audience to follow along, and all the board members and staff, executive staff members have gotten a copy of the document, so I won't bore you with reading. And let me just simply say that surveys were conducted in September of 2012, and you see the numbers of responses that we got from teachers, instructional staff, about 56% responded, administrators about 73%, and school support about 62% in terms of responses. After the actual documents were completed and returned, we then conducted four focus groups this past March, who received the information, and without names attached, of course, and they met and discussed sort of, here's their feedback, here's their thought on the summary information that they got, and what they thought about the answers that had been done, as well as what they had as their own views and opinions of the district from their perspective. That document was then developed and sent to us, and in that document, it talks about the strengths and weaknesses of the district. I sort of highlighted, I tried to lift directly from the document, three categories, the strengths of the district, weaknesses of the district, and recommendations section, and then behind that, you'll see. So, the first one deals with the strengths of the district, and this is sort of a composite of where the general consensus was, not that everyone said it, or some percentage, but the general consensus was that the atmosphere of community network is very positive in our district, that there was a real sense of rich and family that existed in the minds of those who worked in our district, and that employees and employees' children and grandchildren, many of them are products of the school district that they now work in. And they also talk very specifically about abundant resources, specifically technology, which really ties into what we're talking about tonight. Under some of the weaknesses of the district, they felt that, those that responded, felt that there was some unequal, at least their assessment was, or perception is that, there was an unequal allocation of IT resources, and that under professional development, that at times, there was a perception that there was a disruption in school when many teachers and administrators were out for PD all at the same time. Support staff felt they needed more access to professional development, and that another weakness was that a lack of good communication and sometimes misinformation was perceived as happening. And then finally, employees felt that they were at times uninformed, or the last ones informed about the things that impacted them specifically, their schools, their positions, et cetera. There was also a fear and mistrust that seemed to be fairly widespread according to the responses, and employees felt threatened but afraid to speak when their views, they felt the views were different. Under the recommendations section, there are a list of items that speak to inequity of staffing, perception of that, a quest to consider reducing heavy workloads, improving the communication and the flow of information, and modeling continuous improvement and engendering a greater level of trust, and that there were some safety and behavioral concerns. Now, behind that, the document itself, which sort of, I lifted from, to give you that information, first, the first page in the background, I would sort of skip past that, I've just referenced that, the first, and the next page, I would go past that as well because it talks about the focus groups and findings, et cetera. I'd go to the next page, which deals with key insights, and I just want to mention to the board very quickly, the terms that they use, I lifted from them comments, but they use terms like a collegial atmosphere, that they felt that the district two offered an atmosphere of collegiality. Also, they felt that the Richland family was an important feature, and that we had done a great job of preserving the small-town feeling despite experiencing significant growth and mobility. Under number two, under abundant resources, they felt Richland Two's, and some people described it as a technology district, about the middle of that paragraph there, and then they said, however, there was a significant concern among participants about the equal allocation of resources, at least they felt that was the case. And then finally, many of them wanted to make sure that available technology is properly utilized, and suggested that maybe we have not maximized our technology resources to its maximum use. And I know we've heard Mr. Manning speak to that on a number of occasions. Then number three, under the divergent opinions regarding professional development, a number of people felt that it, that the one-size approach, one-size-fits-all approach didn't work, there were a lot of positive and negative views about Schlecki specifically. One person felt it was a nice buffet, and others felt they didn't match the school needs, and they were also somewhat disappointed with the flexibility of their own professional development and training in their local schools. Under the second half I mentioned a moment ago, support staff felt a need to have a lot more access to professional development. Under number four, which deals with the lack of communication resulting in misinformation of employees feeling out of the loop, there was a lot of discussion, they indicated it was fairly intense, it became very obvious very quickly, employees do not feel informed about decisions made at their school and at the district office. It gave many examples of ineffective and inadequate communications that were cited. And then many participants alluded to the significant changes that have occurred in the district and felt they needed to be a lot more involved or have a lot more knowledge beforehand before that, before some of those changes were actually instituted. And they felt that there's a real challenge to make sure, instructional staff specifically, teachers felt that they shared a greater concern regarding information flow between the district and their school. Number five deals with mistrust and a fear of undermining job satisfaction, a very tangible sense of fear, mistrust among those who participated in the focus group, and a lot of it, a lot of it, they felt came from a need to improve communication, and by doing that, they felt that improving communication would in fact improve the level of trust and confidence. They said at the bottom of this one, this is the last one, that at the very bottom of this, that participants felt that many of the colleagues did not respond to the survey because they were fearful the district would target them if they gave dissatisfactory ratings. Whether it's true or false, I don't think it's true, I think it's perception, but nevertheless, perception in this case is reality. Additionally, many, some participants rather, said they were cautious with their own survey responses, suggesting that survey results may be rosier than reality. And then finally, under the recommendations, I've mentioned them briefly a moment ago, where they talked about reducing the perceived inequities, reducing the heavy workload, number three, improving the flow of communication, number four, modeling continuous improvement and engendering trust, number five, to address perceived safety and behavioral concerns, and number six, to improve issues of perceived inequities of staffing and resources. The group insight from Virginia, who did the, both the survey and the focus group, felt that this document is hopefully going to be helpful to us as we now move towards having the district develop teams of individuals from throughout the district to help begin to develop strategies to address those, those issues, whether they are perceived or real. Mr. Chairman, thank you for giving me the opportunity to continue with the project, I enjoyed being a part of it. I've spoken to a number of different schools on another matter over the last couple of weeks, but also I thanked every school where I went to for their willingness to participate and give us some candid feedback about, one, how well we're doing in areas that we're doing well in, as well as those challenges that they still see that we need to continue to address. And so, I hope that our next step will be that we will put together teams to begin to specifically address issues that have been identified with very tangible changes that we can point to that say, as a result of this climate survey, here are things that we're doing differently in our district. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson. There's a lot of information in this, we've had this for a while...
Yes, sir.
...as a board, and we're, I'm sure most of us have read it several times. Because it's not that long, it was very well done as far as summarizing and putting it together. I think there's some things that all of us agree with and all of us don't agree with. That's, we'll need to discuss that, and I think you're right, we need to go forward and see the things we need to put in, implement. Any other questions for Mr. Jackson at this time? Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir.
New business, no action requests. Proposed revisions to policy ADC, Dr. Breschew?
Yes, at this time, I'll ask that Dr. Washington review the purpose of the need for changing this policy and what those changes would be.
As you know, we've started the process, I believe it was in the fall, of looking at our policy manual, reviewing the policy manual, see where it needs to be updated since we went through the major revisions back in 2001, 2002, and 2003. As we continue that process, we've come across this policy, ADC Tobacco-Free Schools, that was not in compliance, or updated to match the 2007 Tobacco-Free Schools Policy, GBED. And this policy, ADC, is being presented, seeking for information and to bring it up to date with our employee policy.
Any questions? Updating policies, that's, I appreciate you going through these policies, I'm sure we've got some things that have slipped through the cracks, there's no way I don't...
Is there a, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is there a parallel policy, Dr. Washington?
Yes.
For faculty and staff?
Yes.
Okay, and that...
That's GBED, that was updated in 2007.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and we'll take that for information and make a motion at the next board meeting as I practice. Okay, items for our next meeting, which will be the 23rd at Spring Valley High School. We are moving our headquarters, okay? Polo, I can't say enough about Polo, and it's been a great location, a great facility for us to have it, as was Dent. But as we move on, we're going to, we have asked, and Spring Valley has volunteered their facility to, for our home base as a board next year. So, our home base will be there, and we will, of course, go through schools on at least our second meeting of the month. So, Spring Valley, do I hear, do I have any items for the, Dr. Breschew?
Yes, sir. Student learning report, we will again be meeting regarding the proposed revisions to policy ADC Tobacco-Free Schools, and we will also be seeking approval for the 2013-14 general fund budget.
Other items for the future?
Mr. Chair, I would like for, I guess this was fall under Mr. Carter, Jack Carter's area, I would like for us to get some figures for security, particularly those people who work nights, evenings at night. We were at Westwood late one night because of, the starter broke on the car, my grandson's car, and it was dark out there, and we had to wait for the touring truck to come. Probably about 11 o'clock he came. But there's only one security officer, and the only defense mechanism he's got is his two feet and a flashlight. I think that we, we've been very fortunate over the years, that nothing has happened to any of our security people at night. Westwood is a hot, big school, a lot of our schools are big now. I think that we need to prepare these officers with at least some pepper spray or taser, I'm not suggesting we put a gun in their hands, but I think that we should be proactive in giving them something more than a flashlight, and tell them to run like hell. So, with that being said, I would not want my child or my relative walking the perimeters in the woods over there, too. With all of the things that are happening nowadays, I just want us to be, take a proactive stand and see what it would cost, what's the best route to go with the taser or the pepper spray or something. If they're startled, if they're going through these buildings, because my understanding, they have to do the outside perimeters and check the insides, is that not correct? And they could walk up on something, at least, you know, it's, when my alarm goes off in the house, when I walk through the house, I have my gun in my hand. I know I'm not suggesting they have a gun, but I am suggesting as they walk through those areas, they have something that can deter the person until they can at least run to their car, if they can make it there. But I would like for you guys to do an assessment, give us some figures of how much it would cost to at least start a step in the right direction to protect our officers. Times are getting dangerous, more and more dangerous, and I just want to be proactive in that endeavor, because it really frightened me for this one guy out there, and who go hit somebody with a flashlight? You going, what, throw it at him and run? So, I was appalled to see that this is how we've been utilizing our officers at all this time, particularly at night in these dark areas.
Okay, I think we understood. Also, I'd like to know what the incidents reports are, have been in the last couple of years. I mean, you know, have we had any... have been in the last couple of years. I mean, you know, have we had any officers in danger of a li- you know, what type of danger they've been in, and what, what they usually encounter, these types of incidences?
And how many break-ins we've had in the schools?
Just, just incidents, yeah.
Yeah, because I know we had several break-ins at Northeast. We've had several break-ins at Dent in the past. I'd just like to know.
Wrap that in one report. Any other items?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we need some edits to our policy BE, our school board meetings policy. We still have 7:30 as our meeting time, and there's a few other components of language I've already shared with Ms. Washington. I think we need to review in that policy.
I'll bring for information next time.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's, we'll go to our second time of public participation. Is anyone who would like to address the board at this time? I need my wake, okay. Board Superintendent comments? I'll start with, from Mr. Manning, we'll come this way.
I just want to thank everybody for a good year. It was exciting to be at graduation, shaking all the hands, and you could just see in the eyes of the students what it meant to them to get to that milestone in their lives and walk across the stage. And it took everybody that, that's part of Richland School District, to the parents, the community, the, the whole village to get them there. And so I, I appreciate everybody's involvement. I do appreciate the talk on Common Core. This is huge, a huge shift for us, and we have a, a lot of questions, I think, as board members, but it's just because we, you know, we know it's coming. I can speak for myself, I'm, I'm nervous, you know, making sure that we're prepared and that we have everything lined up for our students and our teachers. And we're, we're just doing so many things. Our teachers and students are getting used to the technology, they're getting used to the difference in the, the Common Core, just, I mean, everything about the way we work is changing. And so there's a lot in a short period of time to get done. And otherwise, I appreciate my fellow board members, the camaraderie that we have, the, and I think I've said this before, ability to talk through issues and work together, and it's very meaningful. So, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I know Ms. C. I think she's gone already, but just want to say thank you to Ms. C. and the Gear Up program. I worked with her closely at Ridgeview High School, and I've seen and witnessed her work, and she's done a fabulous job. So we just want to make sure we continue that grant, because it's awesome for the students, as they shared earlier tonight. So thank you.
Ms. Brill?
I want to echo what Ms. Elkins Johnson said, too. I thought the Gear Up kids were terrific, and so like to see maybe more kids have these opportunities. Because if the parents don't know, you know, who's going to help the kids? I think I remember in the past, was it career, the career people or in the high schools?
The Gear Up program, the Ridgeview state.
Yes, yes. Guidance and, but you know, this is a fabulous program, and it was impressive. Graduation was inspirational. James and I enjoyed it, and Monica, and we were all there, and Melinda and Chip. I especially enjoyed the speeches, the variety of speeches, and what the kids had to say is very meaningful. And they talked about being transparent, and then sort of coming out of that shell and not being transparent. And it was just very, very moving, and I applaud the principals and their faculty and staff for putting it all together and making that day happen. And we had two days of it. Westwood was the first day, and it was great having all those graduations in that day, and then the next day was all the main high schools. And it was just wonderful. If, if you all haven't spent the day doing that, you should. Recommend it. And appreciate the Common Core information. I can tell you that my three-year-old grandson is computer literate. That's three. Can imagine him at six. Get ready.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Dr. Flim. I share the same comments that my fellow board members have made. Really do appreciate the Common Core. I really enjoy the dialogue and opportunity to ask questions and get some clarification. You know, it's one thing to read something, but it's another thing to have a lot of questions and get answers, so that you get it clear in your mind. So I really appreciate that. And as I stated, I share the same comments. Thank you all again. Appreciate all you do.
Ms. Specter?
I just want to echo what the other board member said, but I also want to comment on the presentation of the Common Core. Y'all did an exceptional, great job answering the questions. I know you were put right there on the spot. So I really appreciate knowing that you have the knowledge to be able to sit there and give, even if the answers are not what we want to hear, it, it's great to know that we've got great people in place that's passing it down to the next level. So it was good having a good feedback.
Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I feel very passionate about this, and when it came up last year, I want to thank Ms. Malet and Dr. Breschew and the entire team for being willing to put in the time and the work and the effort to help us to understand Common Core. It's not as simple as, as some might make it out to be, both the standards as well as the assessment. And so this is an ongoing journey, and I, I thank you in advance for the hard work that's already been done, the hard work that is going on, that will be going on during the summer, the work that will be going on in the fall when teachers come back. And South Carolina, unfortunately, regardless of your political affiliation, has made some very, some very bad mistakes with regards to federal funding and support for education. And this is another example of where we, where we dropped the ball or missed the ball, missed the mark by not going after funds that would support putting us in front of the curve as opposed to behind the curve. I guess that's bad news. I guess the good news, if misery loves company, is that South Carolina is one of many states in our nation who did not receive a race-to-the-top grant or other funding that would have allowed them to be further along in the process. So given where we are, and given the position that we've been placed in, I want to commend you for the outstanding work that you are doing. It is a very critical, Mr. Manning said it aptly, it is a very critical juncture in the history of our, our school district. And, and I would rather us have the detailed, lengthy conversations now than to be making excuses and apologies later for having not done the due diligence as relates to helping our teachers and our students, and we didn't talk a lot about, but I know there's a plan, and our parents as well, be prepared for what's going to happen and the change that's going to take place. Finally, I want to thank Dr. Breschew and our entire team and staff for another great school year. I believe that we have, we have done some remarkable things in our district, and, and tonight was another example of, of the work that's going on and the results of that work. And so I commend every teacher, every administrator, every district official who has worked hard to address some critical issues as we, as we are experiencing some tremendous changes in our school district. And I look forward to continuing to work with every, every administrator and teacher and, and student in our district moving forward to make sure that we do all we can to continue to be successful and continue to be leaders in, in the field of education. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Dr. Breschew?
Just wanted to remind folks that tomorrow is their second annual South Carolina Midland Summit. We host this very, very strong professional learning opportunity, and we expect we'll have people from all sorts of districts in our state and people from outside the state as well that are coming, making their way to our district. It will be at Westwood High School, and we certainly hope that anybody in the community certainly can come and visit. We'll, we'll have two full days, so all day Wednesday and Thursday. And particularly on Thursday, there was a gentleman that I had an opportunity to hear speak, and I was really pleased that our, our IT folks were able to secure him to be a part of this session. His name is Travis Allen, and I suggest that you, you Google Travis Allen to find out a little bit about who he is. He will be our speaker for the, the large session on, on Thursday at 1:15. He's actually a college student and is remarkable in the work that he is doing nationally and internationally around technology and the understanding of the use of technology in, in education. Also, I would like to mention that I want to congratulate all 1,673 graduates of all hands that I shook during this past week, and we seriously have such outstanding students. And I, too, Ms. Brill, were so impressed with their remarks and their spirit that they really shared with us during those, those ceremonies. Also, I was very inspired by the performances that were showcased by our students as well as staff throughout each and every ceremony. And last but certainly not least, I want to thank our chief financial officer, who is retiring, and thank him for all the work and the service that he's provided to the staff, the students, and taxpayers of Richland Two. We wish you the best, Bob.
Thank you. I want to, I want to reiterate what just you said. I've been working for you so long, with you, and, so I'm working for you, I think I have been working for you, it seems like. But you've been, you've been a good leader, you've, I've enjoyed working with you over, how long, 16 years?
Fifteen and a half, sir.
Fifteen and a half years, 16 years. And we've seen everything as far as, as far as finances and budgets and reactions at county council. Been there. But thank you for your service to our district. Nothing but the best in your future endeavors, whatever that may be. I can't imagine you retiring, but, but you sure your wife wants you at home, right?
Actually, she's got other thoughts.
I was wondering, I was wondering. Okay, we'll, we'll miss you. Thank you. Also, another item, agenda item I want to place is that we need a report from the charter school. I believe it's about time. I know they report yearly, so let's...
I believe we have that scheduled for July.
July, you do? Was that on this? Okay, good.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I didn't put that on there, but...
Yeah, okay, good. Just want to, just want to make sure. And the Common Core, many of you were here with No Child Left Behind, right? I mean, it's some things you just cannot prepare for totally. I mean, we, we all get that, but, but I, I really admire you for putting the extra effort in and trying to do what the best we can do with the resources we have. But again, if resources are a problem, I would like to know if that's a problem. I mean, you know what I'm saying? If, if, you know, if it's just the fact that you can only do so much, and I think, in the most part, that's probably what it is. That's what I'm seeing after listening to your reports, I mean, you know, to, you know, with more money, make it faster. No, teachers got to learn, people got to learn, you got to train people, and that takes time, and that takes effort. And that's where I think that's the strongest part I see of your total preparation here, besides our technology and other resources we have, which have been great. But I just want to thank you for what you do, and I'm sure we'll be as ready as this district can be. Do I hear, let's see, I'm sorry, Ms. Specter, you had a question? Oh, okay. Okay. Here, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, and second by Ms. Specter. You're going to get a little vote on your screen, so.
Did you just do that something?
Mm-hmm. Beating the jury.